Good evening, and thank you for viewing the January 19th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. New cases continue to be reported in Humboldt County. The city urges residents to get vaccinated and boosted as our best defense against the virus and the personal and economic impacts it has on our town. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged on to the Zoom meeting webinar, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. City staff will unmute you, and you will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also on the bottom of the screen. Press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is time for public comment, city staff will request you to unmute, and you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted, and you will have two minutes to comment. So next, we have ceremonial matters, and we have a proclamation recognizing January 2022 as National Mentoring Month, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Watson.
Whereas this year, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods celebrate the 137 combined years of service provided to the youth in Humboldt County. Together, it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, advocates, and many others who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes January 2022 as National Mentoring Month, and thanks all of our local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The City Council also calls in residents to help close the gap between the availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with the Big Brother, Big Sister, CASA Advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods mentor. Dated today, January 19, 2022, and signed by our mayor, Stacey Atkins Salazar.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Next, we have reports by commission or committees, and so we have an annual report from the Planning Commission, and I believe we have that presented by our Planning Commission Chair, Julie Basaid Elock. So I'll turn it over to Julie.
Hi. Actually, Julie couldn't make it this evening, and so I'm the vice chair of the committee. My name is Judith Mayer, and so David Loyah asked me to review our annual report with you in Julie's place. So thank you for the opportunity. There were a number of things that the Planning Commission worked on this past year that will continue into the coming year. We're hoping to actually complete the local coastal program update, which has been a very, very long time coming. We've started work on the Gateway Plan, which is also linked to the Strategic Infill and Redevelopment Program. And we're going to begin to work on a more general, a broader review of the general plan and its related zoning, which has grown out of a number of discussions over the past year as well. There are a number of things that the Planning Commission would report on from last year, which were mainly staff activities rather than commission activities. And that included some work to streamline permitting and on regional planning, especially the climate plan, the Climate Action Plan. We had hoped over the last year to make some inroads on getting some resources for training for commissioners. That didn't really get very far, but we'd like to request resources for commissioner training for the coming year as well. And over the last year, we also looked at redevelopment needs, some issues with historic preservation, a great many routine projects, and consistency reviews. We canceled a lot of meetings over the past year, which isn't surprising with COVID, 11 meetings in all meeting, nearly half of the meetings that we might otherwise have had. The work for the coming year will really focus on some long-term planning issues. Finally, we're hoping to finalize the local coastal program and looking at the zoning associated with that. A lot of that is going to depend on our interactions with the Coastal Commission. And since we've been intending to finalize the local coastal program, one way or another, for at least the last 10 years, we're just going to hope for the best this year, but I think we do have a schedule. So that's looking up. And that's really closely linked as well with some of the reviews that we'll do with the general plan, looking at the city's proposed gateway-specific area plan. And of course, a lot of work is going to go into that broader review of the general plan, which has been with us now for 21 years, and in its most recent review for the last 13. So that's a very, very substantial set of work. And I'd like to make a plea, as I've done in the past, for some resources for training. We've got a fairly new set of planning commissioners, just as we have a relatively new city council. And I think some of the training resources, which we've discussed with Community Development Director Loyah, would actually benefit the commission, but potentially also staff and even the city council as well. And I think that Community Development Director Loyah can probably go into some more detail about a bunch of these issues with you, if you'd like to ask some questions of me or of David. Thanks very much for the opportunity to tell you what we've been up to.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mayor, for that report. And yeah, I think that training is always a good idea, so hopefully we can, you can maybe present some figures of things that you might be hoping for and things that you'd like to do to staff, so when we're working on the budget that will be coming up, we can see if we can fit that in for you. So thank you very much, and thank you to everyone on the commission for your service. Do we have any questions or comments for Commissioner Mayor?
I don't have any questions, but just comments to echo the mayor. I think training is a wonderful ask, and definitely try our best to make that happen. And I'm also interested and looking forward to the general plan review. Thank you so much for all the work you do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I strongly support appropriating funds for, you know, the training that's desired. I think that's something that should be very doable. And in addition to training, is there anything else the council can do to help you guys better do your jobs?
Yeah, I think that one of the things that will really help us a lot would be to have more communication between the Planning Commission and the council. I know that in many cases, the council is raring to act and to take action on broad programs. And I think that the Planning Commission really appreciates the opportunity to provide comments and the advice that we've gotten on the commission to provide to you. And so that actually helps us to do our job when we know that it will make a difference in your decision-making. And of course, in many cases, just supporting staff goes a long way toward helping the commission do our work. I think the city staff has been doing an astoundingly good job this year under really, really, really difficult circumstances, and has pivoted and jumped and climbed and done all those athletic things that you really don't expect to do in your professional life, and done them pretty impressively. So supporting our staff as well as just listening is really going to help us. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I know that I really enjoyed our study session with the Planning Commission. You guys have such a wealth of knowledge, and I would really look forward to doing that more, especially with some of the things that are coming down the pipeline, like the Gateway District and whatnot. I found that extremely valuable, so I would like to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely strongly support more communication. You know, the Planning Commission is definitely our most important appointed body, so I think it makes a lot of sense to communicate more. When the Planning Commission talks about development projects and considers future development in the city, how does the discussion around the wastewater treatment plant come into play? Is that something that gets considered, is brought to you by staff? You know, one of my biggest concerns right now, I feel like from the information I've received from staff, you know, if we're lucky, at best, we may be able to support another 4,000 residents in the city. And it just sounds like, you know, some of the development, like the Gateway Project and HSE's expansion is going to, you know, significantly outstrip that.
I think that's something that's going to come up in a number of the different areas that we're going to be addressing this year, not only the Gateway, but also the general plan review and virtually any SEQA document that we have that may indicate a growing population and greater demands on our infrastructure. And it's not just the treatment plant, it's other city infrastructure as well. So all of those infrastructure issues are very much front and center for the Planning Commission, and, you know, for other community committees as well. So yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. It's all my questions.
Do any other council members have questions? Okay, so do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this particular item? So just a reminder, this is for this item agenda, agenda item, sorry. All right, too many microphones. Jean, did you want to speak on or ask a question about the Planning Commission annual report? Go ahead. Jean, go ahead. There you go. Nope, she muted herself again. Are you holding, maybe did not have a question about the Planning Commission, you're holding for the next public comment? All right, I think we can hold.
Have we missed the open comment?
Nope, just hold tight, Jean, we'll be right back to you. I think we're...
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, we're right there now. I guess we kind of just got into it.
We didn't miss it.
So was, is there anyone else wanting to comment on this? Okay, any final comments from the council? Okay, so thank you again, Commissioner Mayor, for that report, and thanks to all of the commissioners for all of your service.
Thank you very much.
So this next portion of the meeting is our early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. All right, go ahead, Jean.
Did you call on me?
We did. Jean, go ahead. Yep, you're on.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'm at the Plaza right now, and I've talked to several of our community members who live outdoors this week. And the parking lot that's secured for the people with the $6,000 lease month-to-month for the land that they're on, that is progress, and yet I feel like the most prioritized of our homeless community has not been addressed. Their needs weren't discussed at that meeting, and I was hoping that there might be a special meeting set aside for that. I've interviewed a lot of people, and they've talked about some of the, like, if they were to be, have that $6,000 as well available to them on a month-to-month basis to be used for different things, like necessary motel rooms, in some cases, month-to-month for some people, charging stations, storage lockers, funds available for them to go to the store and get gear, rain gear, you know, not that the money ever has to touch anyone's hands, but to have accounts set up where these people can get tarp and stay warm. It is a crisis. And if, no, you're next. I also have other people that would like to speak on the phone. It's my phone, but it's not, it would be another person talking at the end of my two minutes, if that is possible. One of the community members said something as, if you can accept me as I am, and I get serotonin into my brain, and I can hear you, and I am less defensive. And I just wanted to spread that word, I thought that was lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. So that is your two minutes, but if you've got another person with you that would like to offer public input, go ahead and put them on the line.
Thank you. Hi. Hi, I'm Jackie Taylor, and I'm 71, and I've been living in front of caravan dreams for a year. I took three months off a couple months ago, but about a year and a few months. And so I'm retaliated against by agencies, and this started, I'm writing up the genesis of how this all began, 19 years ago, where I pled asylum in Canada, and I've got an injunction in federal court, things. And so I've been so brutalized by your Arcata House thing and the way that operates in every single agency. And I, we need a tent town, and we need, as somebody described to me, a bungalow-shaped thing that we divide shop up, everybody has their own space, and divide them up in rooms, and any kind of thing to get people so thrilled about their lives. And the whole way this thing gets corrected is you make people's lives fabulous. What is hearted about that? I need to get off the phone now? I know how to do all of this, okay? There's money private, and we've bitten our heads against the wall, trying to get the government to obey HUD laws, people living in a place not meant for human beings and frigid weather, and you've got HUD money, California. And why didn't I ever get the money that I should have gotten for COVID, that the director lady at the Arcata House said, and all this, and filling out application forms for shelter plus care. The fastest remedy for housing, it's the equivalent of a Section 8, and you can, as soon as they've authorized that, in a matter, as quick as two weeks, the Housing Authority goes over it, and anybody can sign you off, that you can validate your consecutive years of homelessness and so on. So that's it, and I plan to file something in federal court about our needs, and an injunction is well right away, and I'll get your copies. And I've got against the city here and the police, and what happened with my cat, and terms on my life, my healthcare providers. Thank you.
Jackie, thank you so much for your public comment, we really appreciate it, but your two minutes is up.
Well, sorry.
It's okay, was there someone else that wanted to speak?
Not tomorrow, and if not, the notes, and I'll comment at the end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Jean.
That sounded insane.
Do we have anyone else? Yes, Greg, go ahead.
Hey, yeah, thank you, appreciate your service, as always. I just wanted to mention that with the upcoming consent calendar, you will be looking at the minutes from the previous meeting, and I am listed with the group of people in support of the Gateway Plan, and that is not accurate, I'm surprised that I'm in there. And I know that there are at least two others, I won't speak for them, because of course, I'm not them, but that also spoke against the Gateway Plan. And so that's a rather inaccurate section there. We're working very hard on analyzing the plan, but also trying to develop a means of getting the city to really address some of the critical issues before adding 3,500 units, you know, especially with sea level rise and the swamp lands, the liquefaction of the, of potential liquefaction of the soils, things like that. On another subject, you know, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I really appreciated hearing from people who are houseless, and it would be, I haven't checked out all the city meetings, so I've probably missed some of this, but it would be great to hear from a collection of people who have lived on the streets for a long time and find out their situations and their needs, because it's not a voice that is, you know, robustly shared in our official systems. And also, just on that note, just as a concerned citizen, I did a little, just a very easy math, and learned that the units that will be built in those hotels in Valley West will be $240,000 each. And for one unit, so per unit, you know, with millions of dollars spent, and I'm really glad to see some resources being put into this, but you can build a four-bedroom house for that much, you know, and so I just thought it might be worth a little more penciling there. So thank you for your service again, I do mean that sincerely. little more penciling there. So thank you for your service. Again, I do mean that sincerely. Thankless job, so I'm thanking you. Be well.
Thank you very much, Greg. Who do we have next? All right, Chris, go ahead.
Hello. Have you got me over there on your side?
We do.
Okay, great. I'm not sure what the mechanism is or process for travel of information between committees and council members. And I hope this is the right place and time for that, but I wanted to bring up a note from last night's transportation and safety meeting. Let's see here. So the real main point about the transportation and safety members consensus was that the L Street, K Street, one-way idea is not great, and that was voiced pretty overwhelmingly. They want to see some other options and table the L-K idea for now, was mentioned even by David Hoya, that there was some other issues that are problematic from, because of property acquisition and some other things for that L Street issue. And, you know, there was a lot of voicing of an idea that the feel for Arcata and, you know, the L Street linear park with community gardens and a kind of a quiet zone along the front of the Creamery District was a much better thing. And I hope that we get to hear more ideas along that line and look at some other options for that. So, you know, I, the one, the one guy, the one planner said, you know, the L Street is a, you know, leave it as L Street as a people's quarter, and I really like the way that that rings. So I wanted to make sure you guys get that information, because I don't know how all this works between everybody's busy schedules and whatnot. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening and all of what you're doing. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Chris, and you were correct. That was absolutely the perfect time in the meeting to bring that up. So thank you very much. All right, next speaker is Joanne. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, great. I've got on Zoom, you guys. Aren't you lucky? So this is Joanne McGretta McGary, reminding you that we are in a climate emergency, and Arcata declared such back in September of 2019. So again, we need to start acting urgently, and maybe we can raise that earth flag above all the other flags on our flagpoles, and we can start getting that climate action plan going and implemented. And I just want to let you know that because of the new law about food waste, I have made a point of going to environmental services for the city of Arcata and promoting on social media the wonderful $25 backyard compost bins that the city provides to residents of Arcata. And I understand there are about 60 of those available for the residents of Arcata, and I have volunteered to do what I can by Valentine's Day to get all of those 60 compost bins out of City Hall and into the backyards of Arcata residents as part of a food waste effort and a climate change action that we can all do. And I'm looking forward to becoming an official volunteer for the city of Arcata. Lots of things to talk about. I'm part of the Arcata Gateway Group, and we really need to start looking at livability in the future in a post-fossil fuel world. So everything we do must be viewed in a climate-changing adaptation manner, whether it's development or waste systems or transportation systems. I just really encourage you to get moving in doing things rapidly. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne, and thank you also for volunteering your services for the city of Arcata. We very much appreciate that. All right, our next speaker is Patricia. Go ahead.
Um, yes. So I think probably most of you know that I've been canvassing the neighborhood along with some other people, and getting kind of some insight on what people, the citizens of Arcata's vision is. And some other concerns with this Gateway Plan are just definitely the impacts to our infrastructure, stormwater, the wastewater treatment plant comes up on the top, our fire district, the building of roads, just the cost involved in building new roads. It's kind of puzzling to many. So I kind of just wanted to share some of those thoughts that I'm getting from other people, which surprisingly reflected my own, and then go beyond some of my concerns as well. Definitely height is an issue, parking is an issue, especially, parking concerns, especially with the businesses. And what I've gotten a lot, too, is really wanting to keep that bicycle pedestrian path intact, and elaborating on it and making it a linear park. I thought that was kind of one of my brainstorms, but it actually is out there in the community way before I had heard about it, or I thought I thought about it. So anyways, I think I'm really hoping that everybody comes to the community center on this Friday and Saturday and puts your, put your input out there. Not a lot of people know about this. Probably 1 in 50 have heard about this plan, and very, very few that have heard about it know very little. So I'm hoping.
Thank you, Patricia. That is your two minutes. But thank you so much, and also thank you for reminding the public about that opportunity to attend the Gateway sessions at the community center. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
I see no other early oral communication. Oh, I see one more. Early oral, please raise your hand if you have early oral communications. All right, we have two more. Next speaker will be Aaron. You're coming in, Aaron. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just thinking real quick that, you know, we have this approval for the Gateway Plan coming up in December, or it's proposed that it'll be in December. We also have probably an election in November, and I'm just raising the, I don't know if it's a concern, but just a thought that, you know, we already have a bit of a experience deficit on the city council as of now. We could have two new council people by the time they go around to approval. So I'm just a little bit concerned at that point when you're making a decision that'll affect, you know, the way of life of Arcata for the next 20 years, that, you know, we may be dealing with, like, a little bit of an experience deficit. And that's no jab on the council. I understand you guys are doing a great job, and you're learning fast. But it just makes me a little concerned that we could have, like, a really new council making such a big decision for the city of Arcata. So I don't know if there's any ways to, you know, look at the approval of this plan earlier, or maybe let the new council members get a little bit more acquainted with what their, with what their constituency is asking for. I hope that all makes sense for you. Thanks for listening to me. Goodbye.
Thank you, Aaron, and yeah, that makes perfect sense. So thank you. Our next speaker is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi. Thanks to all the council members and for everything they do. I was also listed on the Gateway Plan minutes for December 15th as not being for the current Gateway Plan. I know, excuse me, as far as being for the current Gateway Plan. And my main issue is I have issues with the current plan and think that it needs some work. I'm for infill, and I'm for affordable housing. This may have been where the confusion lied. And at that point, the Marsh Treatment Plant needs upgrades and will only support a fraction of the proposed housing units from the Gateway Plan and additional HSU housing projects. The addition, over time, of 5,000 vehicles with about one-third accommodation for them, I also have an issue with. And also, in general, just a lot of the issues with the parking right now, next to me with the transportation and how they're planning, definitely with the K Street and L Street. And at that point, that's all I have to say for the night, and hopefully those minutes can be corrected, because I would at very least say that I do have an issue with the plan, and I would like that to fall on the right side. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, I see no other early oral communications. Okay, so thank you for everybody that took the time to speak to us this evening. And next, we're moving on to the consent calendar. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of December 15th, 2021; approve the minutes of the city council meeting of January 5th, 2022; C, biweekly report on general warrants; D, adopt ordinance number 1555, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 10, to make biennial consumer price index adjustments to campaign contribution limitations. Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. E, approve amendment number one to the Arcata Scout Hut lease between the Arcata Kiwanis Club and the city of Arcata. F, adopt resolution number 212-39, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution for Arcata Police Association, title change only, dispatch slash record supervisor. And G, adopt resolution number 212-37, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Arcata authorizing joint application to and participation in the Home Key Program, and rescinding resolution number 212-33, and adopt resolution number 212-38, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending resolution number 212-34. So I think we need to pull item B. Are those the minutes? Is it A? Okay, so let's pull item A of the December 15th meeting. So we've got that one out. Are there any others that the council member would like to pull?
Yeah, I'd also like to pull items C and G.
Okay, so we've got C, so we're pulling out A, C, and G. Are there any, I know we just heard from a couple of members of the public regarding the minutes. Are there any other members of staff or public that would like an item to be removed from the consent calendar? I don't see any members of the public that would like to review an item or remove an item. I would recommend that perhaps on item A, that we just bring that back to you at our next meeting, and the city clerk can have a chance to go through and review the record with that. Since there was a couple of people that spoke, we'll review that entirety and then bring that back to you if there's other questions, so we can entertain those. That sounds great. May I have a motion on the consent calendar, minus items A, C, and G?
I move to approve the consent calendar, minus items A, C, and G. I'll second that.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Schaefer and a second from Councilmember Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's a unanimous vote. Motion passes. Okay, so Councilmember Watson, do you want to start with item C?
Yeah, a few questions about a few checks. The first check would be check number 245251 to a Kristine Sylvia, and I was just curious what that was for.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes. That particular check is related to one of our microenterprise grant programs. I can pull up a little bit more detail if you wish.
No, that's good. That's good enough for me. Thank you. And then just two lines below it, 245253 to Connie Dorina.
I will take a look at that and get you some information on what that is right now. It is a refund for sewer lateral, our lower lateral deposit refund.
Thanks. And then I think just like two more. Check 245274 to a Larity Group. I was just curious what a Larity Group does for the city.
Can you repeat that check number? I apologize.
Yeah, 245274.
contract.
Okay.
But I can.
No, that's good. Thank you. And then check 245291 to US Bank. There were a couple payments of $70,000. You got it.
Okay. Yeah, so that is for debt repayment for 2015 bond service.
Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then I think Councilmember Watson, you also pulled item G. Do you have questions on that?
Did anybody else have comments or questions on it before we go?
I think maybe just for the public's sake, if City Manager Deemer wanted to just go over why these changes are taking place, just so everybody knows.
Okay, are we on G, just to confirm, or were you asking, were there other questions on C? We're on G now. Okay, all right.
So are you going to make a motion on C?
Yeah, you can do them together at the end.
No, we should do them together.
We haven't done A yet, neither.
Well, we're pulling A for next week. So is there a motion for item C from the consent calendar?
I move to approve item C from consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So a motion by Councilmember Schaefer and a second by Councilmember Watson, and item C passes unanimously. So on to item G.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this item has come before you tonight. So these are revised resolutions for the Red Roof Home Key Grant. Between the time of the council's last meeting and the time we finalize the agenda, Danco has solidified a partnership with the local service provider for that property, for that project, if it is funded. That local provider is Redwood Community Action Agency, RCAA. So it does bring a couple of benefits to the project. It brings one, a local service provider. It also brings a potential for additional rental subsidy, because they have access to some of their own funds. As a result of that partnership, we needed to revise the resolutions that you passed at your December 15th meeting to submit that application. Census was coming back to you right away. Based on the council's conversation at the last meeting, we also brought back the loan term sheet to add in the continued public engagement for both residents of the projects and the neighboring community as an item for that term sheet. So those are the items that are in this agenda item.
Great. Councilmember Watson, did you have any further questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate some of my comments at the last meeting. You know, I see three major problems with the project. The lack of any significant public engagement for the project was considered in the rusty nature of the project, and second the take of $200,000 a year from the Arcata taxpayers with no plan to replace it. And three, the delegation of powers of the city staff without oversight from the council of the planning commission. And on the issue of, you know, the $200,000 a year from the Arcata taxpayer with no plan to replace it, it just seems like it adds to a long list of issues that we keep saying we'll figure it out later, including the public process for this project, and also the lack of infrastructure for future developments. You know, the big example being the wastewater treatment capacity for the city. Those are my comments.
Do we have any other discussion on this item?
I thought that what we voted on was just zoning changes, right? And that, and these grants haven't, they haven't even gotten the grants yet, correct? So there'll be plenty of opportunity moving forward for public comment as we continue with these. with these projects.
All right, so a couple pieces. You have done two different steps. During your December 15th meeting, you did actually review, in essence, the application, the loan documents, the resolutions required for the grant applications. At your last meeting, and then you looked at the change in land use designation and the overlay zone for housing for homeless. At your last meeting, you finalized an ordinance around the land use decision. But you had already previously approved, basically, the applications and the loan terms. But as a result of the conversations during the last meeting, we agreed to bring back the loan terms to add the public engagement. But really, I think the request from the planning commission in the joint meeting was that that is an ongoing process, so that as these projects develop, that communication grows between the neighborhood and the projects themselves, so that they operate smoothly in the Valley West neighborhood. So they will be, we heard from Arcata House Partnership today, that they do intend to submit their application for the day's insight by the end of the week. And we believe that Danco is on schedule to do similar. So we think these are going to be highly competitive projects. So far, we don't know of other projects on the North Coast. So from a geographic standpoint, you know, we feel pretty confident that they should both be received favorably in the review process. We can't guarantee they will be funded. But this should be some of the final decisions that you make as a body in terms of the projects.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you, yeah, that was my understanding. And I also want to say, I really am pleased that Danco is working with RCAA. They're wonderful. I've had the opportunity to work with them, so I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add that, I mean, you know, we're seeing that even, you know, in the last couple of weeks, when we've been hearing back from the public, that both Arcata House Partnership and Danco are excited and willing to work with the community on these projects. We've already seen, you know, some hesitancy about who Danco is partnering with on this project. They've brought in RCAA now and has solidified that, to have a local, you know, partner providing services in this project. So, I mean, I see and I want to trust, you know, in our, in our community partners who are working with, that they will take community input into account and that they want to work with the Valley West neighborhood to make this, you know, as great as possible if these projects are even, you know, funded and approved. So, yeah, that's all I had to add on that. And I am also happy to make a motion to approve item G from the consent calendar. A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by council member Schaefer and a second by council member Matthews. So all in favor?
I checked for public comment.
Sorry, do we have any public comment on this?
All right, see no public comment.
So do, let's go ahead.
Re-motion?
No, that's okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay, so we have four votes of aye with one vote of no by council member Watson. So the motion does pass.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question on procedure? Just since you had asked if we needed to make another motion again? It can happen, and it's totally like above board to either make a motion and then take public comment, or take public comment and then make a motion, correct? As long as we don't vote first?
Yes.
That's, okay, thank you.
It was just me rushing to that vote, sorry.
No, you're okay. I just wanted to ask.
No, I appreciate it. Okay, so that takes us into old business. So first, we have award of contract for operations of safe parking program. So can we please have a staff report from city manager Deemer?
Yes, thank you, mayor, council, and the community. This item has before you tonight, over a lot of discussions over the last few years, that on really any given night, several hundred households could be counted as having no safe place to sleep in Arcata. In response, the city council prioritized the establishment of a safe parking program pilot and allocated funds from the American Rescue Plan Act when we allocated the initial rounds of funds of those here in Arcata. As part of the planning for that requested program, the city reviewed potential properties and alternatives for program operations. In December, the city released a request for proposals for operation of the program. The city did receive one proposal from Arcata House Partnership that was responsive, complete, and it fit within the council's authorized budget for the program. The proposal provides for a program that will offer 24-hour staff to location for program users, allows up to 30 vehicle households per night. The proposal is designed to have a mix of family and single sites, as well as reserves 10 spaces for a single-night guarantee occupancy to be able to service sort of those in most need on any given night. The concept around how, you know, sort of the occupancy of the program will be revisited as it's established, this is a pilot, and this is the first time we've done this in Arcata. Arcata House Partnership has a lot of experience, as well as the recent experience of the parking lot shelters that we used with COVID dollars early on and trying to establish quickly, and then turnover occupancy as needed within the community. But it is going to be fluid as we get going over the first few months. It will provide the basic necessities, and it will provide a lot of service referrals. It'll work with willing participants to obtain both financial and housing security long-term, and provide participants access to the Humboldt County's coordinated entry system to be eligible for some of the potential future Home Key projects that are coming up. The site will also be supported by the county department of health and human services, by our MIS program, and the Open Door Mobile Medical. The executive director of Arcata House Partnership is available to answer questions that you might have about the proposal. And the proposal was in your packet in its complete form for the public to review as well. The proposal does come in at the council allocated budget, and it does include the cost of the leased property that was reviewed at your last council meeting. So currently, the lease is set to be paid directly by the council, by the city. And so we, the staff recommendation is that you allocate $600,000 for the operations of the program to Arcata House Partnership this evening. And with that, I'm certainly available for questions, and executive director Darlene Spoor is here as well.
Thank you, city manager Deemer. Do we have questions or comments from council?
I have a question about, so it's included in here, both on page 68 and 69, and I don't know maybe elsewhere in the document as well. But it requires that folks and their vehicles, that the vehicle has to be registered and insured. And that just, you know, kind of concerns me with the low barrier idea that we probably will miss a lot of people if that is a stringent requirement. So my question is, is that included? I mean, is that a legal concern? I mean, can we not operate this if we are including people that, whose vehicles aren't registered or aren't insured? Or, I mean, is there a way around that? Because I feel like that is going to miss a large part of our population if we are, you know, deciding who's in there based off of, you know, that and turning people away if that's an issue.
All right, I'll see if Darlene has any input. Do you want to start, Darlene, or?
Sure, thank you for inviting me. When we looked at programs across the state and certainly across the country that were successful, what we found was there was a large concern to not have programs like this turn into a junkyard. And so in this proposal, what you'll see is that there is funding for Arcata House Partnership to support vehicle repairs, vehicle registration, and vehicle insurance expenses. We want to help people make sure that they have a viable place to live and that, and that that place is mobile. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so could you then, Darlene, just elaborate a little more for us? I mean, so then what, what would the process look like, like for that if somebody was to get assistance in registering or insuring a vehicle? And what, you know, would they be allowed in first, and then they have to, you know, undergo that process with Arcata House's help and services? Or what would that look like then if we are, you know, going to follow that rule?
That's a great question. So that, that part of the operating process hasn't been established yet. We're certainly going to be looking to the community, to, to the, the population that we serve to give us some guidance on the best way to help people prepare for and then be successful in this program.
Okay, thank you, Darlene.
Hi, Darlene. So I'm looking at the budget, which looks really, really close to the amount that we allocated. But then I see under pre-planning needs that the property insurance is not included in that total, if, am I correct? And is that going to bring us over the limit that we have set aside?
So that is correct. I wasn't sure when we submitted the proposal, if the lease was going to be in Arcata House Partnership's name or the city's name. It appears it'll be in the city's name, so that'll be a discussion that Karen and I will have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we don't, we don't know if we have to pay for it or not? Is that what I'm hearing?
We are not anticipating an increase in insurance as a result of the lease being with the city.
So the cost is in the budget?
The, the cost for insurance is not in the budget that we presented if it's under the city insurance.
Yeah, the proposal had just listed a category, but did not put a dollar amount in there because they weren't sure if it was going to be needed or not. We don't believe it'll be needed.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That answers my question, yes.
Page 73 of the packet?
Yeah, and so just to like reiterate and clarify then, so, so it will be under the city's insurance, and there is no anticipated increase in city insurance costs, so this cost would be zero on 73. Okay.
Yeah, my only comment is I agree with council member Schaefer's comments. You know, I'd be fine with removing those requirements about the registration.
Or at least maybe like relaxing the language, because I do see on, you know, the budget that that is included. So maybe, you know, that eligibility, possession of a registered, insured, or operable vehicle, or, you know, willingness to work with the program to fall into compliance or something like that, that would just make me a lot more comfortable, because I don't want to see people turned away because, you know, yeah, they've lapsed registration or they can't afford insurance. And so, yeah, but I see, you know, here in the budget that there is allocated both under, you know, vehicle maintenance and insurance, $6,000, and then also vehicle repair, $8,000. So, I mean, there is a chunk for that, and I hope that, you know, we won't turn people away for that. But maybe just, I don't know, broadening the language a little to be more inclusive.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. I appreciate this point being brought up. I'm very excited about this program overall and very appreciative for all of the work that you all are doing. But I do, I do agree on the registration piece, just that, that does seem like a barrier. And if it does need to be something, you know, set in stone more than just, I mean, I like council member Schaefer's idea of just like a willingness to work with the program, but if it needs to, you know, maybe within a certain amount of days of entering, you know, the parking space, they have to start a registration process or something like that, once they're able to access the services and the financial support. Because I know it's, I mean, as we all know, registering a car isn't cheap and...
It's a little heavy.
Yeah, exactly. And, yeah, so I'm, I'm really excited about this project overall and very appreciative. But I do appreciate the conversation on looking at the registration piece.
Do we have any other questions or comments for Darlene? Okay, do we have any members of the public that are waiting to comment on this item?
Please go ahead and raise your Zoom hand or press star six if you wish to make a public comment. All right, so our first public speaker is Joanne. Go ahead, Joanne.
Actually, I accidentally kept my hand raised. I don't really have a comment, but I'm very curious and hopeful that this safe parking program will help the issue that we are currently having in our community. And I'm glad that it's finally happening. Things take much longer than I would like, but let us hope. I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
All right, and I see no other public comment on this item.
Okay, so we can either have more discussion on it or a motion.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for operation of a safe parking program to Arcata House Partnership in the amount of $600,000. Does that work as a motion?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by vice mayor Goldstein and a second by council member Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to new business. So first off, we have a presentation by Shante Katnesser and Sue Armitage regarding the Humboldt Tenant-Landlord Collaboration. So I'd like to take the time to welcome Shante and Sue. So go ahead and give us a little introduction and then begin your presentation whenever you're ready.
Hello, and thank you for having us. I am very excited to share this. We are very excited to share this. And I think I'm going to go straight into sharing my screen, because we want to hustle and try to get this going for everybody. I'm going to share my sound, and just thank you for letting us be here. This has been a project that has taken about four years. And as you will find, many people have been involved in it. Humboldt Tenant-Landlord Collaboration: Living in Community is the ultimate Humboldt County housing program. Let's see if I can figure this out. There we go. I am one of the co-founders. I am the off-campus housing coordinator. Malagros Artega was the developer. Sue Armitage, she is part of the Center for Teaching and Learning, and she was a huge project developer for this program. Living in Community, a public course, is a wonderful resource for both Humboldt tenants and property owners. The course includes a broad range of content and tips. The course design makes it easy to dig deeper on areas where someone wants to know more and move quickly through topics where one already feels confident. Kudos to our program from Mary Vernach, the Humboldt State University Professor of Sociology. Oh, I'm going backwards. So how this all started? It started in a 2017 Arcata Business Economic Strategic Planning Session, led by Heather Equinox. There were a ton of students who were there, and they had suggested ways businesses could show that they were engaging in equitably safe practices. People wanted to feel safer spending their money in businesses that treated them well. So Student Housing Advocate Alliance, a student-run nonprofit that focused on challenging inequitable housing practices, brainstormed on what that would look like for property managers in the county. I took the project on as my, my master's social work project and started the research with over 190 collaborators in the county. The Humboldt Tenant-Landlord Collaboration was founded in 2018, and the data from five community town hall meetings that the city supported was turned into what we are going to present. It is a living and community educational program, and there are 32 videos that accompany this educational program.
One of the things that Humboldt has been criticized about is the fact that we have such an issue around housing.
There is a reputation that Humboldt County is really hard to find housing in.
I think the most prevalent perception of housing in Arcata is that it's scarce.
The housing market is very, very tight. It's kind of an owner's market.
There's also the reputation that it's hard to find a good tenant.
It may be that there is a population of tenants in general that feel like they're taken advantage of by property management companies and landlords.
So there's different perceptions that I hear of. Some landlords don't want to rent students or rent to certain people because they don't have to. They know someone else is going to apply.
It's generally hard to find that there's not enough housing and that some of the landlords have unethical practices.
I definitely think landlords have the privilege of being choosy.
Whether you are a 17-year-old student moving here to go to college, or you're a 50-year-old professor or doctor moving here to work at the university or the hospital, there's a limited number of options.
It's hard. It's like you want to start like a year before you actually plan on moving here.
For decades, I've heard...
For decades, I've heard students talk about, you know, you need to be on Craigslist or in the want ads like every single day, trying to see when a place comes up on the market. And you need to be calling within that hour to try to even get on a list to be eligible for that place. So I think scarcity has been an issue for a long time in the Arcata community around housing.
It's important to me that we can do better as a community.
We have a way to help heal that issue. And I think that's the most important part about all of this is that this is an opportunity to heal from an issue that we've identified. It's very important that we build understanding from both sides, from both perspectives, of the landlord and the tenant, because oftentimes there's gaps in that communication and understanding. Humboldt Tenant-Landlord Collaboration is attempting to identify those gaps and policies and practices in our community. This is important because we are looking to build relationships in our community around the rental climate here in Humboldt County. We also would like to create accountability of the landlords and the tenants in renting a home in the county. Our goal is to bridge understanding between the landlords and renters and also to provide supportive services and resources. I believe it's important to understand that this is ground-up community research that brings in voices from all perspectives, from the landlord's perspective, from the community member's perspective, the student and the tenant. And it also helps us identify people who are really willing to make changes in this and who are giving their time and space and effort to make this work for the entire community. And so the more entities that we have coming together on this project around housing, the more eyes, the more hands and the more heart that we have, the more support our community has in general, and it creates a healthy community. My hope is that not only do we, we build understanding from both perspectives and showcase what, what opportunities we have around housing, but also that people have access to their human right, their basic theme, and that's housing in our community.
And so we want to also give thanks to the hundreds of contributors that have given their gifts up the head, hearts and hands in order to make this possible. I'm just going to breeze through really quickly. I'm not going to read all of these. We had a Humboldt Tenant-Landlord Research Team and they are ever-growing. We have interns, analysts, research assistants and so forth. That is continually growing. We have reached out to every property management company in the community. They have been shared with, corresponded with and asked deep questions about what they need from tenants. We have worked with the city of Arcata and the county with other community partners. Humboldt State University has had a wealth of providers who have come in and shared their information with the research teams, tons of community engagement. As I stated before, we've had about 190 contributors who have sat with us sometimes for over 3,000 hours of research and data. It has been a wealth of work. We want to give a special thanks to Lynette Nutter, our videographer, and all of our stars and people who were brave enough to share their stories. As I said, there are 32 videos that you can find on YouTube and the link is in this presentation. And we'll, we'll sort of go over some of the program a little bit. The Humboldt Tenant-Landlord Collaboration concentrates on 10 modules. The landlord's best practices, tenant's best practices, finance module, mediation conflict resolution, privacy and data protection, service and emotional support, community resources. And some of the notable accomplishments is that we have land and labor acknowledgements. It is accessible to the entire community and open sourced for the world to use in other counties. It's translatable in multiple languages. And I am going to pass it on to my co-host.
Thank you, Shante. First of all, major kudos to you. You've done tremendous amount of work and it's just been a joy working with you. I'd like to tell everyone about the course itself. To get to it, you see the URL up there, housing.humboldt.edu/HTLC. Living in Community is an online course and there are two versions of it because you can see the little arrows that I added to the, to the image there. The first one is for HSU people because we can track them a little differently. But it wasn't enough to make it a course just for HSU people. And so the, the other one is public. It's for absolutely everybody. Local property managers, landlords, groups, municipalities, students' families, and just absolutely every, everywhere. This course has a Creative Commons license as well, which means that any community anywhere could say, ah, they started something here and they are welcome to adapt it and share it themselves. So we're really proud about trying to do something original and provide it broadly. The next page we're going to look at is another video. And this really focuses on one of our very key topics, which is equity. Go ahead, go ahead, Shante.
All of our, our modules are looked at through an equitable lens.
The future I'm imagining is a community where if you experience implicit bias or overt racism, you have somebody to turn to, a friend or a neighbor or an employer or a coworker who's willing to stand there with you and be on your side.
I want to see the local population of Humboldt County and the predominantly white population of Humboldt County give everybody the same benefit of the doubt that they give each other.
There's lots of equity work happening right now in the community. And I think one of the things we're really looking to do is to normalize talking about race and racism and that when we talk about issues of inequities, like we are, we're being humble and looking at how we can improve where we are. And if we don't look, how can we know? And that it isn't a bad thing to look. It's really a humble thing.
I think that the people that struggle with giving other people the benefit of the doubt, I think that they are not exposed and therefore unfamiliar and afraid. And I think that once they learn there's nothing to really be afraid of, that everybody's a person, just like they are, that things will get better.
This work is, it's hard. It's very time-consuming at times, overwhelming, but you know, it takes courage. And I think that that's where we're really trying to get the community to understand that we're all, at the end of the day, want the best for Arcata, want the best for McKinleyville, the best for Eureka, for, you know, neighboring communities. And if we all work together, it can be done.
One of the main things that's going to really change the, the culture and the microaggression and the, you know, some of the issues that we're having up here is that the demographic is changing nationwide. That's including Humboldt County.
In 2050, it's predicted that there will be no major city in the world that will be majority white. Not Prague, not Moscow, nowhere in the world. And so what are we going to do? Are we going to like run from that? Is that going to cause anxiety? Or are we going to lean into that and say, great, this is an opportunity for my kids to be prepared right here and right now because we have HSU sitting on our doorstep that brings actual diversity right here? And welcome that and make this an intentionally integrated community. We can do that.
To achieve racial equity, we need to achieve access to all of the services, whether it's education or healthcare or housing, so that the playing field is leveled. I mean, the idea is, you know, that is, that is the ultimate goal, is that every individual is set up in such a way to succeed to the best of their potential.
Everybody wants the same thing. We all want to be, we all want to be, grow old. We all want to earn a living. We all want to raise our kids. We all want to live our best lives.
We need to create a system to start to undo the systems of racial disparity or racial discrimination that we have created. I mean, this is a very humanly constructed system of discrimination in our community. So the one thing that gives me hope is the fact that I know if humans created it, we can also undo it.
Isn't that great? The three top modules in this class are equity inclusion, tenant best practices, and landlord best practices. But what's really unique is the focus in this class on equity. And as you can look at the comments that people have already given in response to the class, I think you sense that we have some, some success in that and the message is being received. Little bit more about the class. We have 10, 10 modules and we used the best practices we could think of. Universal Design for Learning and Accessibility. We have text, images, lots of videos you saw because we want to keep the story focused on the people that are engaged in it. We also have all interactive exercises and links to HSU and external resources, a whole lot of things. Our videos are, as Shante talked about a little earlier, is that they are in English and Spanish, captioned and transcribed. And I love these. Shante took the time to make comics for the class as well. And this one is specifically about emotional support and service animals, which is an important module in the class. So I love that she did that. And as Shante said, no, this is a research-based class and it's going to stay that way. We have two opportunities in both the public and the HSU versions of the class because we really want feedback. I'm sure we're missing some things and this class will change over time. And I think that's a very good thing. That's in fact, one of our goals.
And so the final thought from a participant of the Living in Community was that this program really helped them to get an understanding of the problems faced when trying to find housing and the struggle that really goes on. They were very privileged to be in the position that they are and this gives them empathy for those who have to try really hard to get a roof over their head. What we've been trying to accomplish with this is creating empathy, creating understanding and building bridges with power dynamics. In the end, participants get a Good Neighbor Certificate that shows that they have taken this program. Some property management companies in the area have offered that they potentially will give discounts on deposits or other incentives for their renters to take. Further, we offer a community support. We're looking to create a cleaning closet for people who will be moving in and out of homes. Support throughout the community through social services. And many people have been utilizing the course, the public course as needed. So they have clients who need to learn about certain subjects and they'll touch base and they'll just go through the module real quick that the, that the client needs to learn about, whether that's finance or data protection or how to rent a home. In, in conclusion, love and action. HTLC and its Living in Community Educational Program is a physical manifestation of the gifts of hundreds of landlords, tenants and community members, hoping to find practical solutions, educate and create equitable practices in our rental climate. And as the Off-Campus Housing Coordinator, I can tell you, it is horrendous out there. Humboldt County community narrative, experiences, input, cultural collateral and connection have made this class and research possible. All of our community, tons of people who have put thousands of hours into this. When a team made up of diverse community comes together and finds solutions to complex problems such as rental housing practices, special connections and opportunities to heal are not only imagined, but they're created. And so if you have any questions, ideas, love, you can contact us at thehousingliaison@humboldt.edu. And here is a barcode if you want to take a picture. If you have your cameras ready, you can take a quick snap. Otherwise, you can email me for this presentation and any information that you possibly would want. And I will stop sharing my screen now. I hope that I did not go over on time. I appreciate y'all's patience and thank you, Sue, for doing this with me.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, thank you so much, Shante and Sue, for that, well, the development of the program and for the presentation. I know you're really proud of it, as you should be. It's also great to have our city manager as one of the stars in the video. So very privileged. So do any members of the council have any questions, comments?
Well, you, you said in the presentation, questions, comments or, or love. And I want to give some love to you guys because I mean, it's great to see it. I remember, I think you guys gave us an update on this probably about a year ago when I first was on council and just the work that you guys are doing is, is so great. And just to see the buy-in, you know, between tenants and landlords and everybody involved and the research that's gone into it to create such a comprehensive program is just so important to our community. And so I think the, the more people that can know about this, the better. And, you know, as a renter in Arcata, I know if you, yeah, if you don't know somebody personally, it's, it's so hard to, to find a single place. And so, you know, just thank you so much for this work and just especially including that equity lens in it and just, you know, really having people check their biases and check their practices and make sure that, you know, they are providing the most equitable, equal playing ground for tenants and that landlords can provide that. And just the work you guys have done is awesome. So thank you so much.
It's no problem. And honestly, this is a collaboration. It had, it was not just us, right? This was years and years and years of the city and the county and, and so many humans coming together and trying to share their experiences and make positive changes. It could have been easy to point fingers and we did not want to do that. We wanted to educate. And the biggest thing that we could get from this today is share. Share that this resource is available. Share that it is here. Share that people can take it for free, right? Like that is why we're here today. We, we, we really appreciate that opportunity and thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo everything that Councilmember Schaefer said. Give you so much love, all of you that, you know, you and everybody you said that worked on this with you. I think it's such an important, incredible program for our community. I really appreciated the acknowledgement of the pain that this is, this issue has caused a lot of folks in our community and that that is, the, the healing of the community is also part of this. And again, I completely agree that the equity lens is so important and I just appreciate that part so much. I, I've been an HSU student and, you know, I'm still a renter and I, I know how hard this can be. And so having you all there to be, to offer this incredible wealth of knowledge and support and guidance, I think is, is absolutely amazing and is super needed in our community. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the mediation process that you support with when issues do arise between tenants and landlords and kind of, yeah, especially for students that might not know what their rights are, what that kind of is like, yeah.
Absolutely. So as the Off-Campus Housing Coordinator, I offer mediation for the students, for landlords and tenants. I am trained through Humboldt Mediation Service. And I also work with Humboldt Mediation Services and do referrals for tenant and landlord disputes. Obviously, it has to take both sides of this, of the, of the dispute to agree to do mediation. And so sometimes that is, is not well-received on both parties. However, we do our due diligence to make sure that it is offered. For students, I do one-on-one case management and it just really depends on the student's needs. I work with tenants, I work with roommates, I work with tenants and roommates and landlords all in one. It just really depends. I don't know if that answered it. And I also wanted to make a quick note that while this is, this is equity on race, we also make sure to work on equity of ableism, learning disabilities, reading disabilities, translations, right, second language. We wanted to make sure that there, that we really found the nitty-gritty of equity and, and exposed things about access and accessibility and ESAs and, and so forth. So just to clarify a little bit that we worked hard at focusing on many, many aspects and spectrums of... spectrums of what equity could be.
Thank you. Yeah, that definitely answered my question and I appreciate you bringing up the other parts of equity as well. And I think that you found a huge gap that I'm so grateful that you're filling. So thank you so much. I don't think I have any other questions, but really thank you. This is such, just such an important program.
I think that was the coolest part is filling in that gap. We found that property managers got tired of being social workers. And so we found that family systems sort of lacked teaching some of our students and other renters how to be tenants. And landlords were not taught how to be landlords and property managers. And so we were trying to fill that educational gap and teach people how to be a good neighbor.
Any other thoughts from council or questions? All right. Thank you both very much for that. And yeah, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if anybody wants to put the word out that these courses are available, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, that would have been my one comment is how can we help get this out to landlords and tenants? And yeah.
All of my information, Kayla Johnson has all of my information. So please make sure to reach out with them and I'll be happy to share that via email, one-on-one conversation, or phone call, whatever that looks like. We do have handouts. I can bring some information into the city council also.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Shante, it might be helpful if you did just send some information to everyone on the council and then that would remind us to maybe see if we can post it on our social media and different thing, in different areas. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all and thank you for the jobs that you do for our city.
Okay, so next under new business, we have item B, which is to appoint two council members with ceremonial authority to select a recipient for the 2022 City of Arcata Business of the Year Award and to present the award at the Arcata Chamber of Commerce's annual Business Leadership Dinner, which I believe has now moved to Zoom. But I'm sure we're going to have a report from staff and they'll fill us in on that.
Yeah, so in fact, there was a meeting this morning. So Councilmember Matthews might have the most current update on the actual event.
Yeah, so we had a chamber meeting this morning and unfortunately, due to the surge of Omicron, we have decided sadly, I think everybody is very upset that we're going to have to cancel this event. We talked about several different iterations of this event that could possibly be either on Zoom or a smaller outdoor in-person for nominees. So because we just really want to make sure that all of these businesses that have done such an amazing job this year of pivoting and continuing to serve the community, get the recognition that they deserve. So we still haven't decided, hopefully we'll know by next week whether it will be a fully Zoom event or some other way. And we will probably have the auction moved online as well. And there's some great things, I'm sure, as always. So I would encourage everybody to go online once that becomes available and bid on some of those. And so people will still need to pick, obviously, a business and will still need to present it in some capacity. So.
Yeah, so each year the chamber has a series of awards that their chamber members vote on. And then they have a Business Leader of the Year, which is actually somebody that is picked by all of the previous Business Leaders of the Year and is kind of typically tried to be presented as a surprise. It can be a little bit more challenging on Zoom. And then the city has one Business or Nonprofit of the Year that we choose. And so we just assigned a subcommittee of the council to be able to keep that award secret until the night of the event. And so we just typically do it in an open session where you pick two of you that will work with the Community Development Department. And the Economic Development Committee typically puts forth some potentials and the council sometimes brings forth potentials of their own and then they review them as a subcommittee and make a decision.
Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Or would this be, could this be appropriate time for people to throw their ring, the hat in the ring if they're interested? I did it last year. It's a pretty simple process, doesn't involve a lot of time. So I'm happy to turn that honor over to other council members if anyone else wants to do it.
I mean, obviously, I would like to do it. I might not get another chance.
Yeah, I did it last year also. It was really fun. And I know that I'd definitely be happy for Meredith to do it because you are also our chamber liaison as well. But if anybody else is interested, it's a good time.
I'm more than happy to hang out with you, Meredith. We can do this together. That sounds good. That works for everyone.
Okay, so how about before we make a motion on that, do we have any?
Councilmember Watson, do you have any desire to?
No, I'm not really feeling up for it, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Do we have any members of the public that are waiting to comment on this item?
Checking for public comment. Go ahead and raise your Zoom hand if you have an interest in public comment on the award selection committee. Seeing no public comment.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Councilmember Matthews and Vice Mayor Goldstein with ceremonial authority to select a recipient of the 2022 Arcata Business of the Year Award and present the award at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Business Leadership Awards Dinner.
I will second that.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Schaefer and a second from Councilmember Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes unanimously. All right. Believe it or not, at this early hour, it takes us into getting close to the end of the agenda. So sorry, maybe I just jinxed it. So it is the time for oral and written communications again. And this time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes for this public communication time. And when it's time for your public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak.
All right, just checking if there's anyone interested in making public comment, raise your Zoom hand or press star nine if you're on a phone. Give it just a second. Okay, I'm not seeing any interest in final public. Oh, we've got one. Okay. Go ahead, Patricia.
Yeah, so this is public comment on unrelated things that are unrelated to agenda?
Yes, Patricia. Yeah, anything that's not on the agenda.
Okay, so I kind of wanted to go a little bit further with what I was, some of my comments before about canvassing the neighborhoods. And another thing I'm getting from people kind of goes hand in hand with the chamber, the chamber mixer that got postponed because of COVID. People are a little concerned about having an indoor event coming up at the community center with this whole rise in COVID. And so might I suggest if it would be possible to move those tables outside and, you know, since it's supposed to be good weather, a little chilly, but it's supposed to be better weather. I know you're trying to keep it as an open house to keep, and keep people separated as much as possible or keep the flow of people, you know, spread out. But I'm thinking that maybe it might be a good time to keep, put some of those tables or all of those tables outside. It's just a suggestion. I know it was a concern of many or a few that I've talked to just in the community. So I just wanted to put that out there to continue with that. And so, thank you. I guess that's all I have, I have to say now. Thanks.
Thank you, Patricia.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a quick question and it actually kind of relates to the planning commission report, but it's just a quick general question. And it was just in terms of the local coastal program. Is it at the present time probably looking toward adoption or approval sometime around in April? Or is that just what they're hoping for with the grant deadline on that? Just to kind of get a timeframe on it. And that would be it. And once again, thanks to everyone for what they do there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Do you happen to, do you know that timeframe, City Manager Deemer? Or is that something we could, should get back to him on?
I'd like to go ahead and get back to them. I mean, there's a piece of the grant work, but then there's the council approval process and then actually setting up for the Coastal Commission hearing. So let me finalize that and I'll get that out to each of you and get that out to Jim as well.
Okay, thank you and thank you, Jim, for your, for your question.
Seeing no more public comment.
Okay, so next we have council and staff reports. Are there any other staff updates?
Yeah, I want to thank the public for encouraging people to come out to the open house for the Gateway Planning Process. I mean, this, the open house is something that we've just tried hard during this COVID period to schedule because we have heard from the community that accessing a lot of the online meetings has been difficult. The plan for it right now, and we will be considering this up until Friday morning, right, in terms of how to operate, is that we will be putting any table seating will be outside, but there will be stations inside the community center. We will take basically people in groups as they come. So, you know, in essence, we will have up to 15, I think it is, different groups because we'll have 15 different stations. There will be a monitor there. So if you come alone, you'll be able to move through alone. If you come with a group of two or four, you'll be able to move through as a group as well. So we do have a lot of COVID precautions in place, but we will be open Friday, partially indoors, partially outdoors, hard to say at this point, but from 11:30 to 7:00. And on Saturday from 9:30 to 3:00. We do really encourage people to come down and give input Friday, 11:30 to 7:00 p.m. and Saturday, 9:30 to 3:00 at the Arcata Community Center.
And you'll also be at the farmer's market as well?
We'll be at the farmer's market this Saturday and the following Saturday. Again, still encouraging people to do the community visiting survey and that's available online, but we will have people at the farmer's market to help fill that out and answer questions and provide other ways to give feedback into the Gateway Planning Process. Somebody brought up earlier the idea that this is really about a 12-month process. There will be lots of opportunities for additional feedback and input. But getting some ideas out there now will give us all some stuff to work with in terms of, you know, redesigning and developing for council consideration.
Will somebody be at those things taking notes about the input that people give?
Yes, there will be, yeah, many different ways to provide input at the stations and to staff that are there. We also have opened up, there is a community group, the neighborhood group that has formed. And so we've been talking with them about either having a table outside or a station inside if they want to try to garner some just additional resources for individuals that might want to better connect just on a, on a resident level with the planning process as well. So there'll be lots of ways.
All right, do we have any other staff updates?
No, thank you.
Okay. How about council updates?
Yeah, I've been receiving ongoing complaints about the very large and growing homeless camp in Valley West. I know Meredith just went and toured it recently and maybe a month or so ago I did a ride along and I saw it and it was pretty significant. And I'm just wondering if the city has any plans to address that camp?
Is this on private property or on city park property?
Is there more than one camp there? I'm not sure. I just know the one behind Arcade House.
That's private property?
Yeah, so it is on private property. We have been in communication with that property owner. But I'd have to see what the status of that communication with the property owner. Just as a reminder, we also applied to the Emergency Solutions, the Encampment Solutions Grant, but that was really to work with the encampments that were at Carlson Park if we received that with cooperation Humboldt. But if there are additional spaces, then we will also be focusing on additional camps in the Valley West area to come in to that, again, if we receive the grant. But the focus area of encampments for that grant is the Valley West neighborhood, starting with Carlson Park first.
And then for months now, I've been receiving complaints about the fence around the data center. And, you know, just looking into it, it appears it was a mistake made by our Community Development Director using his ministerial powers. And he did assure me today that the property owners could have fixed the fence. So that's good news. But it was also reported to me over the weekend that there was an accident there, that a pedestrian was hit by a truck and that it might have potentially be caused by the fence, lack of visibility. So I think that, you know, that's kind of concerning. And on Saturday, Meredith and I went to a very well-attended community meeting on the Gateway Project. We walked around the neighborhood and we listened to community members' concerns about the project. And sadly, there was a lot of discontent from the community with their communications with our staff. People really felt like they get misled by staff in their communications and that there's been a significant lack of transparency. You know, I have to say, in my five years of experience, it seems like every major project that comes before us, these are, you know, concerns that come up. So I just really feel like that's something we need to take a hard look at. I feel like we owe it to the public and, you know, I would, I would like to stop receiving these complaints because they definitely bother me. And that is all I have.
Any other updates from council? I've got a couple. So one of my council assignments is with Arcata Main Street. And so right now they're talking about planning of the Oyster Festival. And I don't want to give away the details because probably I'm not supposed to, but I was really impressed. They are thinking really big this year with their ideas on how to do it and very different and very exciting. But right now, the Main Street Board is really small, so they've got big plans with not a lot of people power to get it done. So, you know, if anyone is interested in being a part of that process or being connected with Main Street, I would definitely encourage you to reach out to Main Street or you can reach out to me and I can connect you. But there's really a lot of great energy, but again, just a small group of people to get that done. And then also just regarding Gateway, I just wanted to kind of put it out there to the public that I'm still waiting to hear if I'm able to engage on that project or not. I'm hoping that I can, but I do live right, I live on K Street, which is part of it. And so, you know, we tried, our lawyers and staff tried to come to a determination and we've flown it up to higher powers, to the FPPC for an official ruling on that, which I'm very much in support of because as much as I'd love to be a part of it, I will abide by whatever that ruling is. And then that way, we know that we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing. So for right now, communications with me are currently paused on that and I do apologize. But we've got other council members that can step in and fill that gap until I've been given clearance on that. So. And then one final thing, just regarding housing, I got to attend, we shifted our roles a little bit and I was able to go to the housing meeting today with Vice Mayor Goldstein. And that's a great group. There is so much discussion. I know people have concerns about, you know, those people that don't have vehicles to live in and such. And I just want to reiterate that it is an ongoing discussion, housing is, of all types of housing in so many of the meetings that I'm in. And one of the things that was brought up today from a member of that group was something that we could do as elected officials is try to get the message out that the county, currently there are, I think it's 182 vouchers for people to be housed. And so that's funding for housing of those people, but we don't have physical units to put them in. So I think four vouchers have currently been used out of those. And so that's just, that's money sitting on the table for people without homes, you know, like as Jean who called in was asking for. But we, we need people in our community that are willing to step up to that and, you know, essentially take a chance on these people that are coming and, you know, with fully-funded ability to pay rent. So just putting that call out there to the community so that we can take advantage of those vouchers and get more people housed. And that's it for me.
You actually just reminded me of something else from our meeting today. And I'm glad you brought up the vouchers. And maybe City Manager Deemer, you can speak more to it because I'm not sure I have all the details correct, but I know there's going to be a count in and they're looking for volunteers. Could you speak a little bit to that and maybe how folks could help out if possible?
I can and I'm going to have to remember the date and time, but it's next week is our annual point in time count. but it's next week is our annual point in time count. So I think it runs between like 11:00 and 3:00 o'clock on next Wednesday. Arcata House Partnership is a hub for Arcata's point in time count. So if people are interested, we do have 35 volunteers right now that are signed up through Arcata House Partnership to be part of that point in time count. But honestly, we've got so many people that are close contacts or positive with COVID right now that throughout the entire county, a lot of our regular point in time count counters are calling with, I don't know if I'll be there. So if you have time next Wednesday, please get in touch with myself here at the city manager's office or directly with Arcata House Partnership. Training is very easy. We can get you trained up for the day. If you just have even two hours to give or a certain area in Arcata that you would like to count can probably be accommodated. So yeah, anybody interested in the point in time count this year of those experiencing homelessness. And just to explain the importance of this is that those numbers that come in on that point in time count do often determine how much funding our service providers from Arcata House Partnership or RCAA, Open Door Clinic, how much they can actually apply for and receive from state funding to come in in this area. So we really try not to undercount and have enough people out there to access all the different areas that people are sheltering.
All right, any final thoughts? Okay, with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.